We are now recording, please begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is Tuesday, August 2nd. This is the meeting of the Seattle City Council. Will the Seattle City Council meeting please come to order? It is 2:01. I'm Deborah Juarez, and will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmember Sawant.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Council President Juarez.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Moving along on our agenda, if there's no objection, Councilmember Mosqueta is excused from today's city council meeting. Hearing or seeing objection, Councilmember Mosqueta is indeed excused from today's meeting. Moving on in our agenda to presentations, Councilmember Nelson will be presenting a proclamation on National Farmers Market Week. The proclamation will first be presented, and then the floor will be open for comments from council members. After council members' comments, we will suspend the rules to allow our guests to accept the proclamation and provide comments as well. Councilmember Nelson, please present your proclamation and walk us through this.
Thank you, President, and good afternoon, everybody. August 7th to August 13th is National Farm Market Week, and this proclamation declares next week as Seattle Farmers Market Week. Thanks to Jennifer Antos, Executive Director, for bringing this to our office. So, Seattle has more than 17 farmers markets in the city, from Columbia City to Pike Place to Capitol Hill to Ballard, Lake City, and these farmers markets assist with the distribution of local fresh produce throughout Seattle, generate income that supports the sustainability of small farms, and also contributed more than $18.5 million to the, uh, million dollars to the local economy last year. So, the ongoing pandemic has been an important reminder that farmers markets assist with the, um, with an important function of bringing community together, and also act as meaningful outlets for new, beginning BIPOC and veteran agricultural and food producers. And one amazing example this year is the growth of Lily's Salvadoran from, um, from market stalls at the West Seattle and University District Farmers Market to their own brick and mortar storefront on Avalon Way. So, these farmers markets also, uh, serve as incubators to, uh, to long-term brick and mortar businesses. So, it is my honor to, uh, to present Jennifer Antos to speak a little bit on our behalf. I thank my colleagues for signing onto the proclamation, and I give the floor to Jennifer. Thank you.
Um, moving forward into Jennifer, if there's no objection, council rules will be suspended to allow our guests to accept the proclamation and provide some remarks. Hearing and seeing no objection, the council rules are indeed suspended, and Jennifer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember President Juarez, and thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for the introduction and for coordinating the recognition of National Farmers Market Week. Um, I also want to thank the full council for your continued support and investment in our city's farmers markets, and more importantly, in equitable food access and in locally grown food. Um, the Neighborhood Farmers Markets is just one of several organizers in our city who collaborated on the proclamation, um, among them Pike Place, Queen Anne, the Seattle Farmers Market Association, and the Del Ridge Farmers Market. We all share a mission to strengthen our local food system by connecting Seattle residents directly to producers and food entrepreneurs. And in turn, our markets have provided more equitable access to fresh, culturally relevant food sources, um, just last year providing more than $1.2 million in local food to food insecure households in Seattle through programs like Fresh Bucks and Snap Market Match. Um, our markets, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned also, act as incubators. Uh, she mentioned, uh, Lily's Salvadorian, it's owned by Lily, Anya, Continia, and her family, and they sold in the markets for more than 15 years before opening their storefront on Avalon Way recently in West Seattle. Um, we are delighted to support and continue to support beginning BIPOC producers, from environmentally conscious farmers to food entrepreneurs like Lily. Again, I just want to thank you for your support of programs and policy that enable our markets to continue to serve, uh, the city of Seattle, neighborhoods from Lake City down to South Park. Um, examples of that include Fresh Bucks, Snap Market Match, um, the continuous effort to reduce permitting barriers, not only for markets, but farm stands and local food businesses, um, and the city's recent support, uh, on the expansion and relocation of the Capitol Hill Market to the new light rail station in Kelton and Versa Want's district. Um, thank you again for the floor and for inviting me to accept the proclamation on behalf of my colleagues, um, and thank you for everything that you do, uh, in our beautiful city. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilmember Nelson, do you want to add anything else before we move on? Is there anything else for my colleagues? I think I've asked that before, but are you okay? I think we're good. Okay, great. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for being here today. Um, so, we are going to move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. Uh, colleagues, this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period for the hybrid public comment period. The remote speakers, um, this time, we're going to do it in reverse. I'm gonna have, since we have eight folks in chambers, we're gonna take the eight individuals that are in chambers first, and then we will be followed by in-person, I'm sorry. We'll do the eight people in chambers first, and then we will do the 48 folks that have called in or are calling in remotely. And, uh, because we have over 50 people, we are going to, um, limit your comments to one minute. We will do the in-chambers folks first, and then we will move to the folks calling in remotely. Um, Madam Clerk, do you want to go ahead and, I'm gonna hand it over to you, and you can go ahead and do the, um, recording of the instructions.
So, I'm having some technical difficulties with this.
Okay, we'll, we can hold while we're, oh, there we go.
Hello, Seattle. We are the Emerald City, the city of flowers and the city of goodwill, built on indigenous land, the traditional territory of the Coast Salus peoples. The Seattle City Council welcomes remote public comment and is eager to hear from residents of our city. If you would like to be a speaker and provide a verbal public comment, you may register two hours prior to the meeting via the Seattle City Council website. Here's some information about the public comment proceedings. Speakers are called upon in the order in which they registered on the council's website. Each speaker must call in from the phone number provided when they registered online and use the meeting ID and passcode that was emailed upon confirmation. If you did not receive an email confirmation, please check your spam or junk mail folders. A reminder, the speaker meeting ID is different from the general listen line meeting ID provided on the agenda. Once a speaker's name is called, the speaker's microphone will be unmuted and an automatic prompt will say, "The host would like you to unmute your microphone." That is your cue that it's your turn to speak. At that time, you must press star six. You will then hear a prompt of, "You are unmuted." Be sure your phone is unmuted on your end so that you will be heard. As a speaker, you should begin by stating your name and the item that you are addressing. A chime will sound when 10 seconds are left in your allotted time, as a gentle reminder to wrap up your public comments. At the end of the allotted time, your microphone will be muted, and the next speaker registered will be called. Once speakers have completed providing public comment, please disconnect from the public comment line and join us by following the meeting via Seattle Channel Broadcast or through the listening line option listed on the agenda. The council reserves the right to eliminate public comment if the system is being abused, or if the process impedes the council's ability to conduct its business on behalf of residents of the city. Any offensive language that is disruptive to these proceedings or that is not focused on an appropriate topic as specified in council rules may lead to the speaker being muted by the presiding officer. Our hope is to provide an opportunity for productive discussions that will assist our orderly consideration of issues before the council. The public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first speaker on the list. Please remember to press star six after you hear the prompt of, "You have been unmuted." Thank you, Seattle.
We will now begin with in-person public comment. If you still have not signed up and would like to provide public comment, please sign up at the podium in front of us, please. The first person on the list is Maria Ann Hudson.
Hi, my name is Maria Hudson, and the daughter of the retired, uh, supervisor warrants for the City of Seattle Police, the daughter of a retired professor from the University of Washington. I myself am an alumni. I'm here to speak about school-to-prison pipeline trafficking, where white teachers are allowing white violence with impunity. There are statutes in which they are routing us to civil complaint and avoiding, preventing prosecution for criminal complaint. What is important about this is that children are being trafficked, they're being abused, and then they're being criminalized. There are violations of child protection rights, where teachers, police officers, judges, prosecutors are supposed to protect them, are not being enforced. We're in our second lawsuit for child abuse with the Bellevue School District because of this.
Our next speaker is Ann Myers.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Millie K. Myers. Thank you for listening to me, all of you. I work for Amazon Fresh Grocery Store at Aurora Avenue, Seattle. I need to tell you to vote no on ending hazard pay for frontline grocery workers. We are getting COVID exposure notifications almost daily from our employers. It costs us so much money. I am not in a union, so I won't get any raise on a big pay cut if you end hazard pay, especially during this 40-year-high inflation. Please follow Councilmember Salons' lead and vote no on ending hazard pay for grocery workers. It's a shame that council members are considering ending hazard pay, but while they are meeting remotely in recognizing the risk of in-person work. I see only two people here.
Our next speaker is Olivia, and, uh, last name says an S, I apologize.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I'm a member of UFCW 3000. I'm here to tell the Democrats of the city council to vote no on ending hazard pay. The fact that a lot of you thought that we wouldn't hear your tiptoeing around on trying to get rid of hazard pay for the fourth time just tells those grocery workers that you think we're blind. No matter how you slice it, losing the $4 will be a major pay cut for most of the union members, and that does not even include the grocery workers that don't have a union. We are constantly dealing with coworkers being exposed to COVID and now monkeypox. We start while stocking the shelves, and some of us have no home to go to after working 12-hour shifts. We put our physical and mental health and families at risk. Don't bite the hands of the workers that fed your city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Dagley.
Hello, council. My name is Thomas Dagley. I am not a grocery store worker currently, but I moved to city, uh, to Seattle looking for work in the grocery, uh, sector, but unfortunately, I decided against it because I thought that you would remove the hazard pay in an untimely manner, providing little to no ability to take care of my family and, and have an apartment here in the city. So, I think that it's important for you all to recognize that you're removing one of the most important bedrocks of your community's ability to contribute back to Seattle. Removing that $4 will cause people who work in the city to spend their money elsewhere, and that's not going to help anyone except for the people that own these giant grocery store chains. I think that it's kind of funny that you're all here remotely, except for two of you, and you're asking us all to mask up in the building. 10 people died just a few days ago from COVID, and every day, more and more people die, yet you're still asking people to come into the grocery stores to work. So, please vote no and do not end the hazard pay until the war is over. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihao, doridem nazi fascist ma bandita and psychopath who speak to us from the heaven. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I honestly sick and tired from bandita what has come from servant mafia, you know what it means, socialist and pure Nazi. I don't understand why they have privilege more than me. It's not equal protection. Everybody who come here, I spent time, money, and gas, everything. I post to be have too many, but because I spoke from the heaven, no, from the sky, you know what it means. You come, everybody, for one minute. This not equal protection. You totally cut people right here for two minutes. We come for one particular reason, because we want to explain us. For one minute, you cannot ever make a piss and toilet. There's a problem what is we have right now. Stand up, America. Stop this freaking idiot from heaven.
Our next speaker is Nate.
I was preparing for two minutes, so I'm gonna read kind of fast. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Nate Prudon, speaking about Seattle's inaugural Indigenous Advisory Council. Uh, I was born in Snoqualmie toward the end of the last millennium. I give thanks to the people of the moon for allowing my parents to accomplish this. I grew up on the east side, earned all my university degrees in Washington, never lived outside Washington State, and have now lived in Seattle for 15 years, currently in District Two. In the past, I've been proud to vote for Councilmember Sawant. I'm also a member of the Duwamish Solidarity Group, which facilitates real rent Duwamish and international community, the 14,000-plus folks who pay rent to the Duwamish people, more than 10,000 if who live in the city of Seattle. Thank you, Madam President, and members of the Seattle City Council for hearing public comments. Any reasonable person who cares about other people and who believes in justice would not be able to argue against an IAC. During a committee special meeting on Thursday, we heard about how great a model this is. Uh, I recommend including, at all times, somebody from the city's indigenous community, uh, because on Thursday, we bore witness to textbook erasure. Uh, thank you, Madam President, council members, and thank you to all nine wonderful nominees of Seattle's inaugural IAC.
Next speaker is Marguerite Richard.
Yeah, I'll say good day. Now, I, my name is Marguerite Richard, and I'm from Seattle, and I put down indigenous folk because there's something going on with the fact that there was a woman that spoke with, from the Duwamish tribe, and she made a statement that, uh, no one from the Duwamish tribe was, uh, accepted or asked to be on a certain committee. And so, I'm saying that I'm an indigenous black. I'm not on any committee. I've never been asked to do anything really important for my people, but I do something important for them every day. Don't you think that's kind of screwed up? And I'm from here, okay? And so, we're gonna get this right. We not gonna keep on going, you know, like, uh, Missy Elliott talking about, reverse it, reverse it, reverse it. No, we're gonna do something now to change the order of the day, and you're gonna give credence to us too, and stop always saying all this indigenous other folk and leaving us out. Yeah.
That concludes the in-person public comment, and we will move on to the remote public commenters. Uh, speakers will be called in the order of registered. If you're not registered again, please register online before the public comment period has concluded. Our first caller is Brian Clerk.
Hello, council. Hello, council. My name is Brian, and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, calling today to oppose ending hazard pay for grocery workers. All of the public comments last week that mentioned hazard pay were opposed to ending it. Grocery workers who found the time to speak were able to speak clearly to you that the BA5 variant is raging. Several people said they'd been getting daily, sometimes more than daily, exposure notifications from their stores, and that a four-hour pay cut, $4 an hour pay cut would mean that many couldn't even afford to work with inflation at a 40-year-high. COVID might be less lethal, but there are so many chaotic consequences to an exposure or illness, like an inability to afford food, housing, medicine, or childcare, among other things. It was shameful that all the Democrats tried to end this hazard pay in December when we knew that Omicron variant was on its way. Don't embarrass yourselves again by betraying the working people of the city in favor of the large grocery store owners. Vote no on the proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Kavanaugh. Daniel, I see that you're muted. If you can press star six, and also double-check your phone is not muted as well.
See, I see his tile up there.
Correct, he still is muted. We can move on to the next caller and get back. Okay, the next speaker would be Steve Cooper.
Hi, council member, uh, members, Council President Juarez, Chair Nelson of the Economic Development Committee, and co-sponsors Peterson and Strauss. Uh, I wanted to speak to you all today and thank you for the support of restaurants. My name is Steve Cooper. I'm the president of Ethan Stoll Restaurants here locally and Seattle Restaurant Alliance. Uh, obviously, the pandemic's been incredibly hard on restaurants, as you all know all too well, and, uh, smartly put in place emergency orders, which we are very grateful, uh, seem to be getting ready to expire. However, uh, you're also taking smart moves to permanently make a cap, uh, on the delivery fees, as this will help facilitate, adjust, and equitable recovery. Uh, the balance of power between the DoorDash and Uber Eats of the world and the small mom-and-pop restaurants that they negotiate with, uh, are, is really an imbalance that you have identified and rightfully, uh, hopefully correcting with your vote today on, uh, the Peterson and Strauss, uh, uh, bill. So, thank you for your time. I really appreciate your support, and your city's restaurants, uh, are here to support you in return.
Next speaker is Emily Boyer.
I'm Emily with Socialist Alternative, and I urge the council to vote no on the legislation to end hazard pay for frontline workers. As a former frontline worker myself, I'm appalled that self-described progressives would even consider such a thing in the middle of a pandemic that has killed over a million people in this country alone. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Van Vost.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jordan Van Vost, and I urge council to vote no on ending hazard pay for grocery workers. Yesterday's COVID data indicate an average of 695 new cases per day in King County. The pandemic has not gone away. Seattle is one of the most expensive cities in the US. Corporations are making record profits while the average laborer struggles with inflation and high rents. Do we remember them when we sit down to eat? The people who smile at us at the checkout stand as they risk their health day in, day out, so that we can put food on our table. Please express gratitude and support rather than disown them with this slap-in-the-face pay cut. New union raises will be insignificant by comparison and will not balance this loss of income, and don't apply to non-unionized workers. Please act with compassion and justice and vote no on ending hazard pay. Thank you.
Next caller is Zachary Kirschbaum.
Hello, I'm Zachary Kirschbaum, 350, Seattle District Six. I'm calling out for you to vote no on ending hazard pay to grocery workers. I can't believe we have to keep such a careful eye on the council to make sure that they're helping the people they promised to represent. I can't figure out why you're so desperate to end aid to some of the most vulnerable people in our community. It's no wonder that the Democrats are losing people's votes to candidates on the right. Since you make it so clear time and time again how reluctant you are to throw them even a crumb of actual aid. Can you imagine subsisting off of a 15-cent raise while the city coldly rescinds aid, COVID is a daily threat, and your boss withholding profits? Who are you working for if not the people you represent? Who benefits from this legislation, big business or workers in danger? Does it reward hard work in public service or exploitation of labor? No more excuses. Vote no on it. Thank you.
Next caller is Joe Segru. Joe Segru, I see that you're muted still.
What about now? My name is Joe Segru. My name is Joe Segru, and I'm a D4 resident elementary school teacher and member of the Seattle Education Association. I urge all of the Democrats on city council to vote no today on ending the $4 an hour hazard pay for our city's grocery workers. Grocery workers themselves have spoken about the devastating impact that COVID has had on workplace function, staffing, and their overall health. As a public school teacher, I sympathize with all of this and think it would be beyond shameful for the Democrats to cut these workers' pay, especially in the context of the variant surge and rising inflation. It has already been remarkably anti-worker and anti-labor for the council Democrats to put hazard pay on the chopping block seven times in the last year. We also cannot accept the race-to-the-bottom logic put forward by Councilmember Mosqueta that if other cities have already cut hazard pay, then Seattle should too. Instead, we need to build movements to fight for hazard pay everywhere. Addition of strong contracts and building a militant labor movement and should expand the Amazon tax to pay for. Solidarity with the grocery workers.
Next caller is Jessica Skelzo.
Hi. Hi, my name is Jessica, and I am a renter in District Three, um, a small business owner of compassionate peer counseling, and a former grocery worker for 13 years at Trader Joe's. And I am calling urging the council to vote no on ending the $4 hazard pay for our city's fabulous grocery workers. Inflation is at a 40-year-high. I don't understand why we'd want to squeeze more money out of grocery workers who are on the front lines, overworked, burnt out, and still barely able to get by, especially when CE, CEOs of grocery workers make mil, made millions last year. Ending hazard pay will not bring grocery prices down. In addition to this, the BA5 variant is surging, and offices of public servants, like the police station, are still closed due to COVID. So, it just doesn't make any sense that we're cutting people who are on the front line. However, other places are still saying, no, this is still a real threat. Please, um, vote no. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ma, um, Fox Matthews, and then we'll circle back to Daniel Kavanaugh. Fox Matthews?
Hi, my name is Fox Matthews, and I'm a dasher based in the Seattle area. I am here to urge the committee to reconsider the new price control on app-based food delivery commissions. This type of policy could negatively impact independent workers like me. I've been relying on the DoorDash app over the last few years to pick up work around my own schedule to put my newborn child into priority and to pursue my passion in the theater and arts. Raising fees due to, due to the council's proposed rules won't just hurt dashers like me, but all the small businesses and stores as well. I understand the good intentions of this regulation, but this new rule could ultimately hurt the very restaurants the council is looking to help and hurt hard-working people like me. I urge you to amend the legislation so that it will not include hurtful customer fees and bring app-based delivery workers to the table alongside restaurant and small business owners to discuss how we can continue to work together to preserve economic opportunity. Thank you.
Circle me back to Daniel Kavanaugh. Daniel, you're still muted. If you can press star six. All right, we will move forward then. And the next speaker is Ruth Linderman.
Hi, all. Hi, all. My name is Ruth Linderman. I'm a member of Socialist Alternative, um, also here to urge the city also here to urge the city council to vote no on ending hazard pay. COVID cases have been on the rise again, and there's no excuse to not continue the protections that we've been offering struggling grocery workers. The reality is that these companies have been bringing in record profits, and their CEOs are taking home astronomical salaries. Meanwhile, inflation and skyrocketing rent prices are squeezing every last dollar out of working-class people. Workers represented by UFCW will be receiving a small raise with their new contract, but the numbers just don't compare. I mean, most of these workers will still be taking a huge pay cut if hazard pay is ended, and that's not even mentioning frontline workers who are not represented by unions. Ending hazard pay would be really, really devastating to so many and a total betrayal of the people of Seattle who voted y'all in top. Thank you.
The next speaker is Anna Powell.
Hi, my name is Anna Powell, and I am the Government Relations Manager for DoorDash here in Seattle. DoorDash knows that price controls lead to higher costs for customers, fewer orders and revenue for local restaurants, and fewer earning opportunities for dashers. That is why we are opposed to the legislation today that would make them permanent here in Seattle. This legislation is unnecessary, as DoorDash already offers a 15% pricing plan for any small and medium-sized restaurant that wants it, not just in Seattle but across the country. Restaurants also have the flexibility to change their plan whenever they want. Furthermore, restaurants report that DoorDash and other app-based platforms have helped them expand their customer reach and grow their business throughout the pandemic. 75% of restaurants agree that DoorDash has allowed them to reach new customers. 69% of restaurants say that they have acquired new dining customers through DoorDash, and the odds of staying open during COVID-19 are eight times more likely for restaurants on DoorDash.
Next speaker is Barbara Finney.
Hello, council. My name is Barbara Finney. I'm a current delegate to the MLK Labor Council for American Federation of Government Employees Local 3197. I strongly urge all council members to listen to grocery workers and follow the lead of Councilmember Sean Musawant and stand with grocery workers, not the grocery pandemic profiteers. Vote no on ending hazard pay for Seattle grocery workers. The declared COVID emergency isn't over. We're in a surge of the most transmissible variant yet. Local hospitals are over capacity. People vaccinated or not are getting COVID. A frightening number are getting long COVID. Ending hazard pay for grocery workers now is anti-worker, cruel, and counterproductive. Follow the lead of Councilmembers who aren't. Vote no on ending hazard pay for Seattle grocery workers. They put in long hours, continue to take great risks to provide our communities with food, keep stores open, clean, and safe. The union grocery store where I shop has only a skeleton crew. Every day, workers say they are out sick because the rest have quit. And it's because of-
Next speaker is Joel Kraft. Joel Kraft, we can't hear you, but can you check if you-
Can you hear me now? Yes. Can you hear me? Great. Hi, my name is Joel Kraft, and I want to thank the city council member for having the public comment today. I am a little concerned that this is the seventh time we've had to come in and that the Democrats on Election Day, when a lot of people have not voted, are deciding to cut hazard pay in the middle of a pandemic when that's the reason we have hazard pay. I've heard that Democrats have been saying, well, other cities are getting rid of it, so we can too. And that, again, is a race to the bottom, because basically you're telling all of your workers and all the people that you consider to be essential. You're telling all of us that you don't care, and you actually just consider us to be your little worker bees that will do anything, and you don't care if we die. A friend of mine worked at Trader Joe's. In the past two months, she has had 35 COVID callouts in her one store. She has been out over 20 times this year, and all because, and is barely surviving. You take that $4 away, and you're going to destroy more lives. Act like Democrats, not Republicans. Vote no.
Holly Chisa, our next caller.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Holly Chisa. I'm here on behalf of the Northwest Grocery Association, and we want to thank you for raising the issue of providing a sunset date for hazard pay in Seattle. Our grocery stores have been open to serve communities throughout Seattle, and we are grateful for the work of our employees and our management teams to ensure our stores are safe, clean environment for our communities to shop. We have turned an important corner in COVID in that vaccines are readily available to any and all, to our employees, to our managers, and then, most importantly, to our community who shops within our stores. That was not available when hazard pay was put into place 18 months ago. As you know, only some grocery stores in Seattle have been mandated to pay hazard pay, while all other businesses in the city have not. In the city of Seattle, all businesses have been open for the better part of a year. Many of our member stores and their labor union have ratified a new union contract, which we have agreed to, and we would ask you now to move forward and beyond these regulations. The New York Northwest Grocery Association urges you to vote yes today to sunset hazard pay. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Isaac Miller.
Hi, my name is Isaac, and I'm from Socialist Alternative. I'm calling in today to ask the city council to vote no on ending hazard pay. It would be a major pay cut even for unionized workers. The latest variant causes a majority of the new cases, like 85% now. And all the data we're seeing is that vaccination and previous infection offer almost no protection. So this obviously still constitutes a hazard, requiring hazard pay. You cannot claim that you're representing the people while proposing to cut hazard pay. It's not once or twice, but seven different times in the last year. That is ridiculous, and you must know that's ridiculous. Especially as we enter a period of record inflation, taking away protections for working people, it's the last thing that should be on your minds. Why are you trying to help big corporations save money during these difficult times, but you're not trying to help working families save money? If you really represented our interests, this would be the time for you to think about increasing hazard pay and expanding it to more workplaces, and doing so by taxing corporations that made billions in profits during the pandemic.
Next speaker is Brian Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Brian Rodriguez, and I am a dasher and constituent based in Seattle. I am here to speak against the new price control on app-based food delivery commissions your committee is considering today. This kind of policy hurts independent workers like me. Working as a delivery driver with DoorDash over the past year has given me the flexibility to pick up additional work when I can to save up to finish college and have more financial freedom to support myself and my family. Dashing is not my own job. In fact, I have a full-time job as a cruise transportation coordinator for the Port of Seattle. But even just delivering for a few hours each week with apps like DoorDash has gone a long way in reaching all my life goals. While well-intentioned, the city council could ultimately hurt the very restaurants that they are looking to help with this bill and hurt hard-working people like me in the process. I urge you to amend the legislation so that it will not include increasing customer fees and bring me and other app-based delivery workers to the table alongside restaurateurs and small business owners to discuss how we can continue to work together to preserve economic opportunity for independent contractors like me. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marcos Wanda.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Marcos Wanda. I am the president and founder of Seattle Latino Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. Today, we are speaking against the cap proportion on mobile apps. And I have to say that we've been terribly worried because we have not been included in conversations regarding the Latino businesses in Seattle, and we're the only Latino chamber of commerce. We had already two apologies from the council members, and I appreciate them very much for having called us. And please include us for these proposals next time. As being sellers, we know the needs of our business more than anyone. Many of our members have entered a partnership with third-party delivery apps with a clear understanding of the terms, products, and services of working with delivery platforms. DoorDash, for one, has to a flexible and transparent pricing structure, enabling businesses owners to choose delivery commissions like the one that is already being trying to cap.
Our next speaker is Tiffany Sanders.
Madam Chair and members- Madam Chair and the members of the city council, hello. My name is Tiffany Sanders, and I'm a representative of your local neighborhood QFC grocery stores. I truly appreciate you bringing this forward today. As you know, we recently reached a record-breaking agreement with UFCW, which the union itself called historic. It's a contract that provides our dedicated associates with industry-leading pay, a company-funded pension, gains, and safety in training, and no added cost to the industry-leading healthcare benefits for both part-time and full-time associates. As you also know, the COVID vaccine is available, and we have worked tirelessly and diligently to bring equitable access to the vaccine, both for our associates as well as for every person in the communities where we operate. We hope you will vote yes to move forward and sunset hazard pay as we usher in this new contract. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jonathan Bishofsky-Cruz.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Bishofsky-Cruz. I'm a grocery worker at Trader Joe's, and I'll be speaking on grocery hazard pay. By now, I hope you are all aware of the lifelong health effects and trauma that can be so easily affected upon a worker who is unlucky enough to catch COVID. In June and July, there were 32 confirmed cases of COVID in workers at my store. We maintain, on average, a crew of just under 110. If we look at cases since the last time city council voted to end hazard pay, that number jumped up to 67 since December. It's shameful to deny the reality of the pandemic that continues to ravage the working class. We can't tell to me to our jobs. Our only choice is to risk our health to diseases that seem statistically unavoidable to the point of emotional numbness every day. Maintaining hazard pay is the absolute duty you have the power to do, and it's very telling that the only people for ending it calling in are the people at the top of the grocery stores, while the bottom of us die. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ann Woodford.
Hello, my name is Ann Woodford. I am a current grocery store worker at Trader Joe's. My Trader Joe's currently has 99 employees, and those 99 employees, 17 contracted the COVID-19 variant during the month of July. The rest of us remain going to work, overworked, overstressed, every day on a daily basis. For the Seattle City Council to call a vote to end this hazard pay again for the seventh time, while the majority of you are still working remotely is shameful. If you want to end hazard pay, get back to the office, show up in person, and put yourself at risk with the general public like grocery store workers do every day. Please, 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 vote to, vote no to end the hazard pay. Send them. Keep it for us. Keep us working. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Trent Wu.
Hello, my name is- Hello, my name is Trent Wu. I'm a grocery worker in West Seattle, UFCW 3000 member. I called in last week and ordered to ask you all to get deep hazard pay for grocery workers. The circumstances have not changed between last week and this week. Circumstances are still bad for grocery workers. We still have people that are out sick. We still have people that are getting exposed to COVID every day. And we have people getting injured because they are being asked to work even harder than normal because we don't have enough staff. If you cut hazard pay, you're going to lose grocery workers, and you're not going to be able to keep your stores open in this city, and people are not going to have food. Please don't cut it for the well-being of the people of Seattle. Thank you much. I yield the rest of my time.
Jack Francis, our next caller.
Hi, my name is Jack Francis. I live in the U District, and I'm a Lancer Bear, and I'm calling in to demand the city council not end the hazard pay for grocery store workers. It's still COVID. COVID is still happening. These variants are absolutely hellacious and insane what they're doing to people. Over a million Americans have died from COVID since it began, and over 100,000 children have been orphaned from this doctor-sake and disease. Please at least allow these workers, these essential workers, to collect their $0.40 per hour that they absolutely deserve to have. These people are essential workers. We wouldn't have grocery stores without them. They're burning themselves out. They're dying. Their children are being orphaned, maybe not here in Seattle, but definitely in other cities and states throughout this country. We stand in solidarity with the working people and not with corporations. Thank you. I yield my time.
Next caller is Sarah James.
Vote no on ending hazard pay for grocery workers. We're still seeing an average of 700 new cases a day, according to the KC dashboard, which most public health experts say vastly under-represents the actual infection rate. The current variants evade vaccine protection. It is shameful that a council of pro-labor Democrats could take away $4 an hour for underpaid frontline workers who are still losing hours due to COVID exposure. These workers have helped us put food on our table through this whole pandemic, and it's disgraceful that a progressive city council could even consider stripping these workers' pay down to a poverty wage, especially while seeing high COVID numbers and record inflation. We should be expanding hazard pay, raising minimum wage, not pushing already vulnerable workers to the breaking point.
Okay, our next speaker is Matthew Henderson.
Matthew, are you there? Well, I see he's unmuted.
I want to unmute his telephone if his telephone is muted. Press star six one more time, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Henderson. We ask you, our elected officials, to vote no on ending hazard pay. I'm a grocery store worker here in Seattle and have been for six years, and through the entire pandemic, that's still very real. Because of the nature of our business, it's very dangerous with reduced protections. We don't make much money. We are living paycheck to paycheck. We are lower-wage workers who historically haven't been well compensated for the hard physical and mental work. Because of the pandemic, we're still very understaffed. With 5,000 grocery employees here in Seattle and by proxy 10,000 loved ones, this hazard pay, coupled with the health and physical effects on the pandemic, is just a small lifesaver, but a massive relief for our struggle. This will cost you on the council nothing, but it will cost us and our families everything. The only people who want to sunset hazard pay are those who will profit. We aren't profiting. We are just trying to survive, and with that, I yield my time.
The next speaker is Brett James.
This is Brett James, speaking on hazard pay. I was a UFCW member for five years. The city council's attempts to sneak an end to hazard pay is an utter disgrace. The work is no less hazardous now than at the beginning of the pandemic. Workers are still forced to take time off due to exposure. COVID numbers are soaring even despite less reporting due to home testing. All this at a time when inflation has risen so high that our $15 minimum wage, won back in 2016, should be closer to $19. So why are city council members attempting to take away income from grocery workers when instead, every single one of you should be fighting to raise the minimum wage and make this hazard pay a moot point? Do better for the working people of Seattle. Vote no.
Next speaker is Preston Sabu.
Hello, my name is Preston Sahabu. I'm a resident of District 4 and a rank-and-file member of the Alphabet Workers Union, and I'm here to stand in solidarity with the rank-and-file brothers and sisters of the Martin Luther King County Labor Council in UFCW 3000, and also any worker in any grocery store, including Trader Joe's, who are maybe currently not union but are fighting to join our labor movement. I'm once again asking the city council Democrats to stand with working people, not the corporations that have made millions or billions of dollars during this pandemic. Hazard pay means hazard pay, as in there is a risk that is happening to people's lives, to their working conditions, to their living conditions. Last I checked, COVID is still a thing. Last I checked, COVID is still a thing. Last I checked, inflation is still a thing. Last I checked, rent is still going up in this city. The very least you can do is vote no on ending hazard pay.
Next speaker is Margot Stewart. Margot Stewart, I see you're still muted. Press star six, please.
Hi, my name is Margot. I live on First Hill and I'm calling in from work to demand that the council vote no today on the shameful attempt to cut $4 per hour hazard pay for grocery workers in the middle of an ongoing health and economic crisis. I think it's striking, but unfortunately not surprising that the mayor and council Democrats have tried to sneak this blatantly anti-worker attack forward without any announcements. As many have said, it's the seventh time in the past year that they have attempted to end hazard pay, each time with the COVID pandemic still ongoing. And grocery workers will still remember how in December every Democrat on the council shamefully voted to overturn hazard pay at the start of the deadly Omicron surge at a meeting where Councilmember Sawant, who was the only consistent opposition to ending hazard pay without sick. Right now, in addition to the raging BA5 variant in King County, Illinois and California have just declared a state of emergency around the monkeypox outbreak, whose numbers are growing in Washington as well and these are direct and obvious threats to the health and safety of workers, but so too is the roughly 10% inflation of the cost of food, gas and other essential needs while workers are already struggling to make ends meet. And I think they cut hazard pay right now would be a really...
Next speaker is Julia Buck.
Hello, council. My name is Julia Buck and I'm a resident of District 6. I am calling to ask council to please not end hazard pay for grocery store workers. COVID is still at a high rate of spread. Grocery workers are still undergoing greater risks because they need to be in contact with the public. On top of that, the hazard store pay augments workers' earnings so that it's more possible to take a sick day if that's not compensated or if a shift needs to be missed. And that makes the entire community safer. So I'm asking the council to please not end hazard pay as COVID continues. I'd also like to ask council to please consider a councilmember's paralysis amendment to make sure that companies cap food delivery fees, that workers' earnings are not affected by that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Richie Thai.
Hello, this is Richie Thai. I'm a member of Alphabet Workers Union and I'm calling to register Democratic City Council members to vote no on ending hazard pay. And I'm an office worker and we certainly have less exposure risks than grocery store workers yet. I've seen my family members get COVID. I've seen my immediate coworkers that got COVID. And in my situation, I don't interact with the amount of people on the front lines that are grocery store workers doing. When we get sick, we can do some of our work remotely, but we rely on our grocery store workers first to make sure we're able to stay fed. And this is at a time when inflation is at an all-time high. So I certainly do not think this is the time to be taking away the $4 an hour or that our grocery workers rely on to get by. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Harshman.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is John Harshman and I'm a grocery worker in West Seattle and a member of UFC 3000. I'm asking you to vote no on repealing the hazard pay. As you've had members of the grocery industry call in and say that the readily available vaccines are a reason that you should repeal it, I think that we can see in the reports of the latest surge of the Omicron variant that it's getting past those vaccines. It's getting past people who have just had COVID as little as three weeks before. So that's absolutely no foot to stand on on when to take, why to take it away. We're definitely in the middle of a surge right now and that's evident by the fact that the majority of the council is still meeting remotely. It would just be cruel for you to pull away at this time. We're still seeing new cases come daily and people who are from having COVID are having to leave work early because of the fatigue. Everyone is stretched thin and you're putting the community at risk for food safety issues by pulling this away and leaving...
Next speaker is Carl Dyer.
Hi, my name is Carl. I'm a former food service worker and I'm calling on the City Council Democrats to extend the vital hazard pay for grocery workers. Explaining with those in the Democratic establishment who have tried to justify this major claim, no UFCW union Kroger contract excuses this pay cut in the midst of the surge of the BA5 variant. If anything, hazard pay should be expanded. Not only would ending it be a blow to grocery workers, but it would be a blow to their children, partners, parents and all the community members dependent on these labor's incomes. Stand with frontline workers, not with grocery corporations making record profits amidst historic inflation. I know councilmember Sawant will vote no. How will help describe progressive Democrats vote? Thanks.
Next speaker is Aiden Carroll.
Thank you. My name is Aiden. I am a member of STIU 1199 Northwest with DESC, where we are also in the last month seeing a surge in COVID cases. This is no time to end hazard pay. This and the things the issues we see in grocery stores and elsewhere are ultimately a result of the lack of worker self-management. But failing that, the minimum wage should be $30 an hour and failing that, we cannot go backwards. With the DoorDash thing, that may also be ultimately stemming from a lack of worker self-management when workers are caught between the restaurant employers and the DoorDash employers. Not that the powers are necessarily equal between them. I also just returned from Santa Cruz where things are in some ways thought worse to homeless folks, but they have...
Next speaker is Emily McArthur.
Hi, my name is Emily. I'm a renter in District 2. I'm here to call for a no vote on repealing hazard pay. I'm glad to know I don't have to wonder if councilmember Sawant will vote no on this, but with the track record of voting to overturn during the last surge, what about the so-called progressive Democrats? We're supposed to believe these big business job stories that they're just mom-and-pop stores trying to deliver publicly necessary goods, but the reality is that Kroger CEO made $18 million last year. $4 an hour hazard pay is the difference between workers being able to hold on between stores being staffed and not. The new UFCW contract does not replace hazard pay even in its highest raises and it also doesn't cover un-unionized workers. The basis of hazard pay was that we are in an emergency. As a housing activist in this city, I've seen the way the Democratic Party is eager to declare a housing emergency than continue with business as usual with handouts to corporate developers and refusing to fight for rent control. But the reality is that even as nationally Democrats have stopped funding COVID testing or an urgently necessary round of boosters, we are still in an emergency. Vote no to end hazard pay, stand with grocery workers, not bosses, and build a party that we don't have to beg to stand with us.
Next speaker is Lucas Kruger. Lucas, I see you're still on mute. If you press star six. We'll move on to the next speaker and circle back to Lucas. Next speaker is Alyssa Kaufman. Oh, excuse me, that's Lucas.
It wouldn't unmute.
Go ahead, Lucas. We're here.
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, hello. My name is Lucas Kruger. I'm speaking on behalf of CB120372. I just wanted to ask you not to cancel pandemic hazard pay for grocery workers. For one, as other people have said, we're already in the middle of a pandemic. COVID cases are worse now than they were for almost all of 2021 and now there's monkeypox to worry about. Grocery workers risk life and limb. A lot of people have gotten very sick. A lot of people have died. A lot of people have suffered permanent consequences from COVID that they got in the workplace, even the doubly or triply vaccinated. A lot of grocery workers are also supporting multiple people, including children, elderly, people who are immune or compromised or cannot work. And the terror of getting them sick is something I can only describe as nauseating. A $4 pay decrease in the face of that is like it's a slap in the face, especially with the lack of rent control or affordable housing. In 2021, for a full-time worker to afford a two-room apartment in Seattle, they would have needed almost $30 an hour and rent has increased since then. So I'm asking you to please leave the hazard pay increase in place and ask the council to consider extending hazard pay to other industries. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Alyssa Kaufman.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Kaufman. I live in District 4 and I'm speaking today to urge City Council members to act with a conscience and vote no on ending the $4 an hour pandemic hazard pay for our city's grocery workers. Inflation is at a 40-year high and there is an acute affordable housing crisis throughout the region. Moreover, the COVID variant that's raging and feeding our grocery workers at a huge risk is not exciting. In these conditions, even making an argument to end hazard pay is correct. I am baffled and horrified that this is the seventh time in one year that our City Council has put ending grocery workers' hazard pay on the agenda. You know that this is morally wrong and legitimately out of bounds. We cannot afford to treat our grocery workers in this way. Our constituents know it and you know it. Do the right thing, serve your city and vote no on ending hazard pay for our city's grocery workers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Madeline Dinks.
Hi, my name is Maddie. I'm a voter in District 3. I'm calling today to urge the Democrats of the council to vote no on ending hazard pay for grocery workers. As long as workers are at risk of COVID, hazard pay should stay in place and it's a betrayal that this council continues to put the interests of corporations over workers. The BA5 variant is more infectious than previous variants and prior immunity vaccines are not slowing its spread the way it has previous variants. Your own policy staff have noted that ending hazard pay could disproportionately impact marginalized workers. The union pay raises have been brought up. As many people have mentioned, a lot of grocery workers in the city of Seattle are not unionized and even though two would, would only see at max a $2 an hour pay raise and at minimum a $0.15 pay raise. Workers need to be able to afford not just to support themselves when they're out sick, but also to be compensated for the fact that they're overworked and they're overlooked currently by the city of Seattle. Thank you.
Next speaker is Thelma Jones. Thelma, see that you're still on mute. If you can press star six. Or double-check that your phone is not muted.
Jody, what number are we on?
We have six speakers left and we missed a person in the audience that would like the chance to speak.
Okay, can we come back to Thelma?
Sure.
Okay.
The next speaker is Braden Comstock. Next speaker is Tammy Hetrick.
Thank you, council. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Tammy Hetrick. I'm with Washington Food Industry Association. I represent independent grocers and convenience stores in Seattle. We want to thank the council for considering 120372 on hazard pay. We have provided safe workplaces since the start of the pandemic. We continue to do so. This has impacted the groceries and we have had record losses in Seattle and we have had owners leave Seattle because they couldn't afford to stay in business. We ask that you please consider ending hazard pay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Logan Swan.
Hi, my name is Logan Swan. I'm a District 2 renter, union ironworker and longshoreman and I'm calling today in solidarity with my grocery store siblings and their hazard pay. COVID isn't over. Just in the last month, myself and others that I work with have gotten COVID, probably from work, since that's all that any of us have time for anymore with rising rents and inflation. Listen, ending hazard pay isn't a neutral position. To vote no is to stand with the workers that feed us. To vote yes is to instead stand with the big business CEOs and their obscene profits. You can hear that just based on who's calling in. Grocery store workers are opposing ending it and the paid-bout pieces of the employers are telling you to vote these workers' money into their own pockets. I want to thank Thelma Sawant for being the only council member to support workers and oppose ending hazard pay, unlike the corporate Democrats who are pushing this anti-worker bill. President Hevontime in one year.
Next speaker is Daniel Wing.
Hey, I'm Daniel. I'm a renter in Seattle and I'm also an Amazon warehouse worker, speaking in solidarity with grocery store workers here. Yeah, I can second the testimony from other workers and spoken that COVID really isn't over. On our Amazon A to Z app, we get a notification almost every day about a known COVID case in our warehouse. There really is no basis to end this hazard pay for grocery store workers, you know, who've kept our economy and society running through this pandemic. There's no basis to end their hazard pay other than bending to the interests of the grocery bosses who have continued to make record profits in this period. And even if COVID were no longer a risk to workers, we're all still feeling the weight of out-of-control gas and rent prices, increasing prices actually at the grocery stores that are making it so that these workers can barely afford to shop at the place they work. It really doesn't matter what complicated justification you try to come up with for ending this hazard pay, whether it has to do with future raises coming from a union contract or some insane narrative that because we have vaccines now we can go back to normal. If you vote to end hazard pay, working people will know that the pro-labor Democrats in City Council sided with, you know, the Grocery Store Association of Northwest and their profits to take away $4 an hour from people...
Next speaker is, we're going to circle back to Thelma Jones. Thelma Jones.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Thelma Jones, a local union member, 3000 UFCW grocery store workers at Metropolitan Market in Seattle. I urge all the Democrats, Seattle council members, to vote no on hazard pay. So all essential worker, please vote no for hazard pay. Thank you.
Our last public comment speaker in person is Rex.
My name is Rex and I'm urging and pleading you guys to not end hazard pay. You guys have heard all the reasons today as to why we should keep it. We have not heard one good reason to take it away. Who are you guys trying to help? Are you guys trying to help your constituents or big business? We are facing an economic and health crisis. We need your help. I was here last week and not many of you guys were. I saw you there and I thank you. I don't want you guys to postpone this vote again. I want you to put a rest to this. I want you guys to vote no on ending hazard pay. Thank you, guys.
That concludes the end of our public comment list.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So we have one person that came in?
We have concluded all of our public commenters.
Oh, okay. I thought we had another individual that came into chambers.
We were very swift and efficient and he's already spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was calling in. Wasn't looking at the screen. Okay, thank you. All right, we have reached the end of the registered speakers, both remote and in-person. Public comment is now closed. On our agenda, we will move on to adoption of the international introduction referral calendar. If there is no objection, the introduction referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the IRC is adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the IRC is adopted. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, if there's no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to adoption of the consent calendar, we will now consider the proposed consent calendar. Are there any items council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? Not hearing or seeing any. We will move on. So I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Member Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Swan.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson. Aye. Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The consent calendar is adopted. The clerk, please affix my signature to the minutes and the legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf. Moving on to, I believe we have five matters on our committee reports, beginning with item number one. Will the clerk please read item one into the record?
Item one, Council Bill 1-2-0-3-7-2 relating to employment in Seattle, amendment sections 100.025, 100.030, and five of ordinance 1-2-6-2-7-4 to establish a new date for ending hazard pay requirements and automatically repealing the ordinance.
Very much. Thank you. And I move to pass Council Bill 1-2-0-3-7-2. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass this bill. On February 3, 2021, the city of Seattle enacted ordinance 1-2-6-2-7-4, known as the Hazard Pay for Grocery Employees Ordinance, requiring grocery businesses to provide employees with hazard pay for work performed in Seattle during the COVID-19 emergency. The hazard pay was intended to compensate grocery workers for the risks of working on the front lines of a global pandemic, improve their financial ability to access resources to stay safe and healthy, and encourage them to continue their vital work and support the welfare of the greater community that depends on groceries, grocery, excuse me, employees for safe and reliable access to food. This legislation would end hazard pay requirements in recognition of the progress made towards supporting the health and safety of workers and the community through high rates of vaccinations and reduced numbers of COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations. Before I move any further, are there any comments from my colleagues? Councilperson Swan. And then after Councilperson Swan, it'll be Councilperson Morales. But go ahead, Councilperson Swan.
Thank you. I will be voting no yet again on this bill to end hazard pay for our city's grocery workers. As the BA5 COVID variant surges, as inflation stretches workers' paychecks to the breaking point, Mayor Harrell, big business, and the Democratic council members are shamefully dedicated to cutting the wages of essential grocery workers by $4 an hour, which is what this bill would do. Grocery workers and all frontline workers have made incredible sacrifices during the pandemic, and they deserve a raise, not a pay cut. Today is the seventh time the Democrats have put legislation to end hazard pay on the council's agenda since July 27 last year. I cannot think of any other issue that has been tried so many times in one year. Compare this to how in the last 40 years, the Washington State Democrats have not once put ending the statewide ban on rent control up for a vote. They have controlled the governor's mansion for 30 out of the last 30 years, the Senate for 20 years, the House for 23 years, and have controlled all three of those, for 15 of those 30 years. This is truly revealing about the real priorities of the Democratic Party. To date, my social council office is the only one that has consistently opposed ending hazard pay. Pressure from strong public support for hazard pay forced Democrats to delay the vote until December 13 last year, at which point all eight Democrats voted yes to end hazard pay, a bill that was sponsored by Councilmember Muscata. I was sick that day and was unable to attend, but I had made my opposition to ending hazard pay during the pandemic perfectly clear. With the Omicron virus flaring at that time, then Mayor Jenny Durkan was forced to veto that cruel measures. Councilmembers have heard the facts directly from grocery workers during public comment last week, this week, and previously. As Trent, the West Seattle worker who spoke today and last week, and who's a member of UFCW Local 3000, said, "We are basically hanging by a thread, and if that thread called hazard pay is stuck, it is going to be very devastating for the grocery workers in this city." In contrast, Kroger CEO Rodney McMullin took home a cool $18 million last year. Albertson's president Sharon McCollum was paid $11.7 million. The companies they head up are major chains. The many brands owned by Kroger include QFC and Fred Meyer, while Albertson's owns Safeway, among other brands. They are hiking food prices for working people while reaping billions in profits. Even the city council's own central staff have noted that the bill to end hazard pay will disproportionately impact black and brown working people. Corina Bull's analysis correctly states, quote, "Ending hazard pay requirements for grocery store employees could have a disproportionate impact on grocery workers who identify as Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The risks of working during the pandemic are especially significant for BIPOC workers because they are overrepresented among the retail frontline workforce, more likely to earn lower incomes and disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. Despite positive trends in vaccinations and key indicators of COVID-19 activity in King County, there are disproportionately higher rates of COVID cases, hospitalizations, and deaths among communities of color with the highest rates in all three categories for Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander residents, and the second highest rates for hospitalizations and deaths for American Indian, Alaskan Native residents," end quote. And in the various clauses, this bill itself recognizes that, quote, "The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has determined that COVID transmission in King County is at a high level," end quote. So what possible justification could there be for ending hazard pay for grocery workers unless elected officials want to tell the truth and say they're simply increasing the profits of big businesses at the expense of workers? When she brought forward the ending hazard pay bill for a vote in December, Councilmember Muscata argued that Seattle should end our hazard pay because other cities had already ended theirs. We simply cannot accept this race-to-the-bottom argument. Councilmembers will also no doubt point to the new contract between UFCW Local 3000 and the major grocery bosses. I have heard several myths to that effect. I have heard it falsely claimed that Seattle's hazard pay must be repealed before UFCW members can get their negotiated pay raises. A plain reading of the union contract shows this is utterly untrue. The new contract states that the 2022 pay increases are, quote, "effective on the first day of the contract or the first Sunday after hazard pay ends, whichever is later, but no later than August 28, 2022," end quote. In other words, union workers will get their deserved pay increase on August 28, which is before this bill would even take effect, whether or not Seattle's hazard pay remains. The Democratic establishment will also no doubt argue that UFCW members will get substantial raises in their contract and that ending hazard pay will not result in lost wages or pose a hardship. While you already heard from the workers themselves, but we also should point out that this math doesn't add up. Union represented workers will receive a raise this year of 15 cents an hour for new hires and $2 an hour for most workers with over 3.5 years' experience. Workers with no union will not even get those raises. So no matter how you slice it, losing $4 an hour will be a major pay cut for most union members, not to mention those without a union. And not to mention that $4 an hour is hazard pay to help compensate for the additional risks grocery workers face during the pandemic. The raises in the contract barely keep up with inflation. There are certainly no replacement for hazard pay. And let's be clear, ending hazard pay will not lower food prices. These corporate chains have not and will not return the savings, quote-unquote, savings to consumers. Kroger and other supermarket corporations are profiting handsomely from inflation, which, according to a recent Bloomberg article, quote, "remains on a tear, especially when it comes to food costs, which rose 10.5% in June from a year ago, the largest increase since 1981," end quote. The facts are absolutely damning for if Democrats vote to end hazard pay. It's very clear which side they are on. I do still urge council members to vote no on ending hazard pay, but if Democrats end hazard pay now, they will be doing more than terminating a crucial public policy. They will be saying, in the midst of this ongoing health emergency, that the lives and well-being of frontline grocery workers don't matter, whereas profits for the wealthy reign supreme. As worker Brett James said today in public comment, "Why are city council members fighting to take away hazard pay when instead you should all be fighting to increase the minimum wage and make this hazard pay a moot point?" I agree with Brett. In fact, the city council should be making these $4 an hour permanent for grocery workers. And in fact, all workers in this city deserve at least that much of a pay raise, and in fact, much more, given the skyrocketing cost of living in this city and the historic levels of inflation that we are experiencing nationwide and internationally in this historic crisis of the global system of capitalism. At the end of the day, what this vote will show if Democrats vote to end hazard pay will once again be a reminder for working people that we cannot rely on this party that primarily represents the interests of big business and the wealthy. We have to organize independently, both through social struggles and through the labor movement by building a militant fighting labor movement, as Joe Segru, the member of Seattle Education Association, said earlier in public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Swan. Councilperson Morales.
Thank you, Council President. As was alluded to, the central staff memo that we received about this bill did clarify that if the bill passes, hazard pay requirements would end 30 days after the mayor signs the legislation, so likely between August 25th, September 4th, and that workers under the negotiated collective bargaining agreement will be eligible for additional wages starting August 28. So that would be between $4 and $9 added to their pay over the course of the agreement. So I am glad to know that representative workers will be getting the raises they deserve and that the union has been such a strong advocate for making these raises permanent, which I think is the key impetus behind this legislation, and I understand that. Even so, we are once again in a high transmission period for COVID in King County. The mayor has not ended the civil emergency, and grocery workers are still at risk for exposure, especially now that people seem to think they don't have to wear masks anymore. So for these reasons, I will be voting no on repealing the hazard pay for grocery workers. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. All right, is there any other, before we move forward on the vote? All right, not seeing any. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Swan.
No.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
No.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes. The chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Moving on to item number two from the Finance and Housing Committee. Madam Clerk, will you please read item two into the record?
The report of the Finance and Housing Committee, item two, Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6, amendment 1-2-6-4-90, which adopted the 2022 budget, including the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program. This bill was held in City Council on July 26, 2022.
Thank you. This is originally sponsored by Catherine Muscata, but I understand today Councilmember Lewis will be teeing us up for Councilwoman Muscata. Councilmember Lewis, you want to go ahead and walk us through this?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As was indicated at briefing this week, this bill has been held over. So I will move it to put it in front of us today because I believe we have a sufficient number of votes to pass it today. And I move that Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6 be put before the council.
Second.
And then, Council President, I can make further remarks if that'd be appropriate at this time.
Yeah, I think what we'll do, because there's a little confusion here. You go ahead and do opening remarks on behalf of Councilwoman Muscata. And then I also understand you will be taking lead for the amendment for Councilmember Herbald. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam President. So I will move the amendment after making just a few more introductory remarks. So just to remind the audience, this is the supplemental budget bill to tune up the council's budget in the middle of 2022. As council colleagues will recall, given the upcoming budget uncertainty, there was some degree of adjustment by the incoming Harrell administration to council ads that we put in to the budget in the fall. This legislation reconciles those budget ads to consolidate going into the fall budget the fiscal position of the city. So we held the bill because it does require a supermajority of yes votes to alter a bill that has budget implications, which is the overview for Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6. There is an amendment, which I will now bring, that Councilmember Herbald is the prime sponsor of, but that I am supportive of. And that is Amendment A, which has been distributed.
Yes, just one minute. So you just did the introduction for the legislation, and thank you. I need to ask if there are any comments from your colleagues before we move to your amendment? None. Okay. With that, Councilmember Lewis, go ahead with your motion to move Amendment A.
Thank you, Madam President. I move Amendment A to Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the bill. I seconded. I should have done that. It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment A. And Councilmember Lewis, at this juncture, on behalf of Councilmember Herbald, you will now address the amendment.
Thank you so much, Madam President. This bill revises a proviso that was part of our initial budget package that placed on the Seattle City Attorney's Office budget a proviso for pre-filing diversion in the 2022 adopted budget. In last year's budget, this amounted to about $1.1 million for pre-filing diversion programs. Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6 transfers $200,000, $200,100 from the City Attorney's Office to the Human Services Department for pre-filing diversion contracts. And this amendment was requested by the executive but was inadvertently left out of the supplemental budget when transmitted. So this is an effort by Councilmember Herbald and Mayor Harrell to make sure that this is included in the package and could, I guess, be characterized in that way as a technical fix, although it does have substantive implications for Council Bill 1-2-0-3-6-6, but it was the will of the City Budget Office. And Mayor Harrell, that this be incorporated into the bill. As a policy matter, the Harrell administration anticipates seeing pre-file diversion money being housed in the Human Services Department's budget, and that will be part of our conversation this fall. Central staff emailed this amendment to council members on Friday, July 22. And I don't know if the Herbald office has received or fielded questions from colleagues about it or not, but they did want to include the date when this amendment was initially circulated.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any comments regarding Amendment A as Councilmember Lewis has just presented it? All right, not seeing any. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment A?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Swan.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries. The amendment is adopted. And the amended bill is before the council now. Are there any comments before we go to the actual vote on the amendment bill? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, do we call the roll now? Yes, will you please call? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Lewis, is there anything you want to add before we go to a vote?
No, Madam President. Thank you. I'm ready to vote.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
I'm sorry, Council President. I missed it. Was the motion moved to pass as amended? Did I miss that?
Yeah. It's okay.
Thank you. The roll call. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Swan.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes as amended. The chair will sign it. And Madam Clerk, will you please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Moving into item number three from the Economic Development, Technology and City Light Committee. Um, this is. Going to hand it over to Councilmember Nelson in a minute, but Madam Clerk, will you please read item number three into the record?
Agenda item three, appointment two two seventy nine, appointment Markum McIntyre. As Director of the Office of Economic Development, the committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, you're Chair of the Committee. You are recognized to address this appointment.
Thank you very much. I am extremely pleased to be able to advance the nomination of Markham McIntyre to be Director of the Office of Economic Development. He'll be the first OED Director with formal economic development policymaking experience, most recently leading economic development. Equity partnerships and regional workforce development as Executive Vice President of the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. So OED's mission is to um. Build an inclusive economy where everyone can fully participate. And they do this through strategies and investments that open doors and remove barriers. To wealth building opportunities, especially for communities that have been systematically excluded from such opportunities. Interim Director McIntyre has been busy bringing his knowledge to bear on fulfilling that mission. Since he's been at the helm, OED has launched the Capital Access Program, which provides um low and ultimately forgivable loans to small businesses. Launched and expanded the Seattle Restored Program that fills empty rest storefronts and, and gives small businesses and artists a place. To do their business. Uh, just today I spoke at an event announcing that up to thirty small businesses will be eligible for grants of up to. Um, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for tenant improvements. And then later this year. OED will launch the Small Business Ownership Program, enabling small business owners to actually purchase. Their space, which is the best way to reduce the displacement of BIPOC-owned businesses and keep that wealth in community. So he's been focused on attaining our equity, social justice and anti-displacement policy goals by getting resources directly into the hands. Of the people that need it most and collaborating with uh other parts of our city government, particularly the Office of Housing. And um, the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs to do that. So, as a small business owner, I've seen Mr. McIntyre in the wild, uh, advocating on behalf of small businesses. And um, I am pleased and I just can't think of anybody more experienced or knowledgeable. To accept this role. And I urge my colleagues' support.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Colleagues, does anyone have any comments before we um move forward on the confirmation regarding Mr. McIntyre? Uh, Councilmember Swant, please.
Thank you, Councilperson Juarez. I will be voting no on the appointment of Markham McIntyre to be the Director of the Office of Economic Development. Mr. McIntyre was with the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce for years in various capacities, including as interim president and CEO in twenty twenty. An Executive Vice President last year. As most people know, the chamber represents the interests of many of the biggest corporations. And the wealthiest individuals in this region. The chamber has a long history of opposing any and every progressive measure that would make the lives of working people better. Including paid sick leave, the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage, the Amazon tax, and importantly, ending the statewide rent control ban. This should not come as a surprise to anyone. The chamber exists to advocate for the profits and wealth of the richest people, and that is what they do. Their position on every issue confirms that the interests and greed of the very rich are diametrically opposed to the interests and needs. Of working people. The chamber opposes even small progressive measures. If they deliver, because if they, then because they know that if they deliver real material gains to working people. That it eats into corporate profits. And because when working people fight and win something, it raises their morale to fight for more. In his capacity as a public spokesperson for the chamber, Mr. McIntyre repeatedly opposed the Amazon tax, the big business payroll tax. Expense tax that my office fought for and won as part of the tax Amazon movement. He sent many emails to the chamber's email list and to council members urging the big business tax not be passed. After it was passed, he urged that it be reconsidered. Then finally, he and the chamber announced their lawsuit against the big business tax. I'm happy to note that that lawsuit was recently defeated in the courts, but this is pretty blatant. Uh, you know, having somebody at the helm of a city department who actually headed up the effort to um. Have a lawsuit against the tax that was passed by our city. And to be clear, this was not simply occasional emails that were sent by him and the chamber. It was a serious campaign that big business put real resources into in an attempt to avoid paying even a shred of their fair share of taxes. In a city they were making increasingly unaffordable. Just as an example, I want to put a small extract from a letter that Mr. McIntyre sent to chamber members on April fifteenth, twenty twenty. He said, quote, "Hi, Seattle Metro Chamber Members. Today, the Seattle City Council announced its schedule for upcoming hearings. On the one point three payroll tax proposed by Councilmembers Shema Savant and Tammy Morales. Please sign this letter calling on this council to reject this tax on jobs and to focus on economic recovery. Sending your own comments to council@seattle.gov. Sign, sign the change.org petition. We also encourage you to register for the Downtown Seattle Associations, Associations webinar if you are interested in learning more about the proposal. Taylor Wong, Executive Director of the Ethnic Business Coalition, Jack McCullough, Partner at McCullough Hill, Larry P.S. and Tim C's. Partner at CBE Strategic, will explain the proposal and the danger it presents to our local economy and core. And by the way, Taylor Wong, the person, one of the persons he quotes, was also publicly. Ambitiously opposed to the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage and herself came to City Council many times to speak against it. The appointment of Mr. McIntyre is not a personal question, it is a question of public policy. Mr. McIntyre has not said anything. Uh, you know, lately to indicate that his, I mean, I, I mean, after his appointment. Was an uh, after his nomination for this position was announced, he had not said anything to indicate that his opinions since leaving the chamber have altered in any way. Including his aggressive opposition to the Amazon tax, a tax, by the way, whose revenues have finally begun. Funding desperately needed affordable housing, an attack that was truly indispensable for preventing the most disastrous austerity. Against working people and social programs last year. At a June committee meeting, when I asked him what alternative pro- progressive sources of public revenue he would propose, given that he was deeply opposed to the big business tax. He did not have a response. I also asked what wish, vision he and the department would bring in light of the looming recession. The already record levels of inflation and the burden of the pandemic being shoulder by working people and the most struggling small businesses. As part of his response, he said, quote, "In any downturn, there is always opportunity," end quote. Uh, in, in my view, this is a Freudian statement that was made because the fact that there is a, an opportunity in a downturn. Is very much true for big business. I mean, we just talked about hazard pay. Look at the um, uh, profits that have increased for grocery corporations. While grocery workers are absolutely struggling to get by, many of them dealing with even homelessness, having to live in their cars. This is true for basically every corporation you name, the corporations and its major shareholders and executives and the billionaires, they wrecked it in during the pandemic. But working people have had it, uh, become much worse off during the pandemic. So, in a downturn, it is certainly true for big business that they have opportunities. Uh, but it is certainly not true for working people. And not, not for, not true for many of the most precariously positioned small enterprises. And the fact of the matter is capitalism is a zero-sum game. So, when big business take advantage of, quote-unquote, opportunities in a major historic crisis. That means they are making money at the expense of ordinary people suffering more than usual. I will not vote for a department director who is publicly advocating for the profits of big business at the expense of working people. The goals of big business and the wealthiest people are completely at odds with the stated objective of the department. Of helping to build an inclusive economy and removing barriers as the department themselves say. Thank you.
Here, Councilmember Swant, is there anyone else that has any comments before I hand it off to Councilmember Nelson for closing remarks? All right, Councilmember Nelson, do you have any closing remarks before we go to the vote? Councilmember Nelson?
Yep, I'm just here. I would simply add that uh, Interim Director McIntyre is the um, is the right person to take. OED's uh, to the next level and um, anybody who wants to know what his vision for OED and the many things that. Uh, he and his team are working on can refer to the uh, responses that he provided to the uh, questions that were asked, and that is linked on um, the agenda.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And with that, um, will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the appointment?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sawat.
No.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Aye.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
In favor, one opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries and the appointment is confirmed. Congratulations, Director McIntyre. You are now recognized to provide brief remarks to the council. Now that you have been confirmed and also for the viewing public. I understand that we will not be able to see you on screen, which is fine. So go ahead, um, Mr. McIntyre, Director McIntyre.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks to the council for your affirmation of my service here in this new role as Director of the Office of Economic Development. Uh, I'm really excited about this opportunity. And we have a moment now when there's uh, turning the corner on the pandemic. There's just tremendous energy in the city, um, wanting to go forward and be that leader in the nation for a, a more equitable, more inclusive. Economy. We've also got an opportunity for Seattle to really retake our position as a regional leader and partner. Um, and not do things in silos, but to do things collaboratively. There's one silver lining that we've learned from this pandemic is that we're stronger together. Um, and so us playing that role at the regional stage and trying to lift up uh, the entire Puget Sound region is going to be really important. I'm looking forward to working with each of you on your economic goals, um, both to help businesses and workers in the city. And so I look forward to conversing with you and understanding your priorities. Um, I believe that partnership leads to progress. And I'm eager to be your partner in this new role. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And before we end, um, I want to thank you because we're going to be meeting again, and I want to thank you for the time. And the time that we're going to have in the future to meet again about how we are going to um, look at the economic vitality of tribes. And leveraging sovereignty for economic development and vitality, not just within city limits, but in the region. So I want to thank you for those efforts. That's been a long, as you know, project of mine for, for decades. And so I'm looking forward to our next um, meeting to. Do some more work on that. So thank you.
I'm eager to, for that.
All right. Okay, moving on uh, to item number four. This also comes out of Councilmember Nelson's committee. Will the clerk please read item number four into the record?
Agenda item four, Councilball one two zero three seventy eight, relating to the City Light Department authorizing the General Manager and Chief Executive Officer of City Light. To execute an operation and, an operation and maintenance agreement. And a telecommunications agreement both with Public Utilities District Number One of Snohomish County and Ratifying Confirms Certain Per Acts. The committee recommends that they'll pass.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you very much. This legislation renews a pair of nineteen ninety one agreements between City Light and Public Utility District Number One. Of Snohomish County. Uh, and those agreements are an operations and maintenance agreement and a telecommunications agreement. And under those agreements, City Light agreed to uh, operate a substation at North Mountain to serve the district's customers in the town of Darrington. In return, the district agreed to reimburse City Light's cost. This ordinance will continue those agreements and extend them another twenty years to August twenty forty two.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments regarding the legislation we have before us that Councilmember Nelson has just teed up? All right, I do not see any. Councilor Nelson, can we move to a vote? Are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Sawat.
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Councilmember Morales.
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Council President Juarez.
Aye.
Seven in favor and opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes, the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. So moving into item number five, uh, Councilperson Nelson, I see this is yours as well. Uh, will the clerk please read item number five into the record?
Agenda item five, Councilball one two zero three seventy nine, relating to regulations of food delivery platforms, establishing requirements for food delivery platforms, providing. Delivery services to restaurants and amending chapter seven point thirty of Seattle municipal code. The committee recommends the bill passes amended.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, I know you're Chair of the Committee, but I understand that Councilmembers Peterson and Strauss are co-sponsors, so I'm going to look to you to see how you want to handle this. If you want to introduce it and then allow your co-sponsors to say a few words before we move into any amendments.
My committee was but the host of this legislation, so I will extend the uh, the speaking to the co-sponsors.
All right, Councilmember Strauss and Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, Councilmember Peterson, you can go first.
Okay. Councilmember Strauss, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Chair Nelson. Um, colleagues, this small business legislation, which I'm co-sponsoring with Councilmember Strauss. Will continue the cap on fees that Seattle restaurants pay to third-party delivery companies. That fifteen percent cap, which has been in place for the past two years, has proven to be reasonable. As well as vital for supporting Seattle's diverse restaurants that have struggled mightily to survive in our city. Our legislation adds flexibility by enabling restaurants to pay higher fees in order to receive from the delivery app platforms. Additional services such as marketing. Our legislation was recommended unanimously by the Economic Development Committee. Want to thank Chair Nelson for um, providing time in her committee for this. Um, because Seattle's emergency order for the pandemic could end soon, our diverse local restaurants face a financial cliff. Unless we take swift action. So I'm hoping the City Council will approve it today and the mayor will sign it soon. So that Seattle's diverse local restaurants can thrive in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss.
Uh, thank you, Council President, and thank you to Councilmember Peterson for a partnership on this. We, we know that this law has worked. It's worked for the last number of years, and we know that capping food delivery fees during the pandemic benefited both our smallest businesses. And consumers. This is be, this is able to spur our entrepreneurs that are in restaurants. To be able to share their gifts further than, than just their um, their own seating area. Uh, this was good for Seattleites during the pandemic. It remains a good foundation for long-term recovery. And this small business legislation means restaurants have more control of their economic survival. It supports a vibrant, diverse restaurant scene here in Seattle. Uh, I really like this bill because it's a common sense protection for our restaurateurs. And our foodies alike. I'm joining you in this meeting from my district office in Ballard where we have a vibrant restaurant scene. We also have a dense area of uh, where people live and then a not-so-dense area where people live very nearby. And I'm constantly seeing the food delivery programs working here. And this bill makes sure that our small businesses are protected. Um, and it, and really sets them up for a long-term recovery. So. Just wanted to thank you, all the supporters, Kate Hoffman in my office, um, and Councilmember Nelson for making this a speedy process. And of course, Councilmember Peterson for your partnership.
You can hold up on the thank yous till the end, okay?
Aye.
All right, with that, are there any, uh, are any of my colleagues have any comments or anything else we need to put forward? Councilmember Morales, I'm looking at you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, is this the right time to move to amend the bill? I move to amend Council Bill one two zero three seven nine as presented on Amendment A, version two, which was recently distributed.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to amend the bill as presented on Amendment A two. And um, Councilmember, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved um, and seconded. So Councilmember Morales, at this time, do you want to talk about your amendment?
Sure, thank you. Um, so I do want to note upfront, this uh, this is version two of the amendment. It incorporates a small technical change, uh, to streamline. Um, and basically this would prohibit uh, food delivery platforms. From reducing compensation of uh, platform workers in order to comply with the ordinance. Under the existing language in the remedies section of the ordinance, food delivery workers would have the right to file a civil action to enforce the requirement. Um, and I'm bringing this because in early twenty twenty, um, my office worked with then-Council President Gonzalez. Uh, on the original bill to ensure that there was worker protection included. Um, and just want to make sure that that is included here as well. Um, the industry did support. Uh, a similar fee cap legislation I know in Minneapolis, and um, that provision did include. Uh, uh, provision to prevent deductions from workers' compensation. Um, I do want to note that we ran the amendment by the Executive's Office today. Um, and we heard back that this was generally consistent with our past practice on other labor laws. Um, to prohibit actions by employers from reducing pay. Um, so I, I do think it's important that as a city, we make a clear statement. That platform companies cannot reduce the pay of workers in order to comply with the new ordinance. And I think uh, this change represents that, that broad belief that bosses shouldn't steal from their workers. Um, so I uh. So I, uh, move that we amend and ask for my colleagues' support.
All right. Colleagues, are there any comments on Amendment A version two? Okay, not seen any. Will the clerk please? Yes. Oh.
Hi.
Councilperson Peterson?
Yes, Council President, I just wanted to clarify for the viewing public what version two is. I think we've got version, uh, we do have we do have the amendment online on the agenda. It's just that I think what's being moved is a version that, that removes some redundant text from it. So just to clarify for the record, um, and Councilmember Morales, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the version two, uh, is, uh, looking at specifically seven point three zero point zero three three. And it's looking at that subsection B, and it's removing that, it's streamlining it by removing, unless the food delivery platform can prove that its decision to take the actions would have happened in the absence of this chapter seven point three zero going into effect. So that last part is removed. The council members all saw this via email circulated by central staff, but just for the viewing public to put that on the record, if that's correct. Councilmember Morales?
That's right. That's the version two.
Yeah, that's, thanks, Councilperson Peterson. But the amendment or the Amendment A version two is online, though. It's the correct ones on, is posted. Yeah, okay, we're good, but thank you. Councilperson Strauss is on a new hand or old hand?
Uh, this is a new hand.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Morales for bringing this amendment forward and and working with everyone to, to fine tune it. That's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's thank everybody and we can move forward. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment A version two?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Nay.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. The motion carries, the amendment is adopted, and the amended bill is now before the council. Are there any further comments on the amended bill? Okay. All right. Is there, um, any closing remarks from either of the sponsors before we go to the vote? Nope, okay. We're good. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
For President, Councilwoman Nelson is trying to be recognized.
Oh, I didn't see that, I'm sorry. Where, she's not on my screen.
Sorry, I was waving my hands here at the thing. So, uh, the Seattle Restaurant Alliance has two thousand four hundred members who are struggling to recover from lost revenue during the pandemic. And the last thing they need on top of escalating inflation is a sudden increase in the fee for the service that's been their lifeline. These restaurants make up the fabric of our neighborhoods, and their customers are my constituents. They asked for this legislation, and I'm happy to support it, and I thank the cosponsors, Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Strauss, for bringing this forward.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't see you. I see you have a different tile up, up in here. Okay, so we've done that. You did your closing remarks. All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the passage of the bill as amended?
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sawant?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Aye.
Council President Juarez?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The bill passes as amended, and the chair will sign it, and Madam Clerk, please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf. So that concludes our, um, committee reports, and I'm going to move on, on to the, move on on the agenda. Next is, um, items removed from the consent calendar. There are no items removed from the consent calendar, so we will move on. Adoption of other resolutions. There are no other resolutions for induction or adoption today. Before I adjourn, is there any other business to come before council today?
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember Lewis, um, here on the Council dais. I do have just a very brief item that I would have mentioned at briefing, but we hadn't nailed this down, um, at the time. Uh, and that is for two additional public hearings we'll be holding on the Metropolitan Park District. And just wanted to take this opportunity to, uh, to briefly, uh, mention that for the benefit of the public watching the meeting. This information has also been distributed to council colleagues during our meeting by Jacob Thorpe in my office. And I will just briefly read, um, these two public in-person hearings. The first is Monday, August fifteenth from six P M. or starting at six P M. at the Rainier Beach Community Center in District Two. The second is Wednesday, September seventh at six P M. at the North Gate Community Center in District Five. These, these meetings, um, are not going to have an opportunity for a call-in comment. They will only be for in-person comment. I do want to remind everybody that all of our Metropolitan Park District meetings in council chambers do allow, um, a comment for dial-in. But the purpose of these is really to provide an additional opportunity for people in South and North Seattle to provide in-person, uh, comment at an evening session. If that is their preference to express, uh, feedback on the Metropolitan Park District. So, um, I'll mention these again in briefing next Monday. Uh, and, uh, like I, uh, stated, these have been distributed to council offices, but I did want to just take this opportunity to, uh, let everybody know.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Lewis and his former president of the NPD. Um, I can't thank you enough for doing these community meetings and, uh, because of COVID, you know, a lot of projects were just put on hold, so it's nice that we're coming back and hearing from the community again for our six-year cycle plan. So thank you for that. Okay. Um, anything else? Not seen any. Colleagues, this does conclude our items of business for today. And our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is on Tuesday, August ninth. I hope you all have a wonderful afternoon. Thank you.